Okay Roland.
I'll call to order the meeting of the regular meeting of the Bisbee Planning and Zoning Commission May 21st at 3:00 PM. I'll call order. Mike Ablyn.
Present.
David Pop Brown.
Present.
David Pop.
Present.
Douglas Dunn here. Alyssa Spiriti.
Present.
Sandy Housman.
Here.
And Doug Taylor.
Present.
We have a couple of staff members here as well. Let's just call the public as if anyone wishes to speak on a subject other than the agenda items.
I don't have an agenda and I'd be glad to speak.
What?
Are you overlay?
Okay.
Were you for the overlay?
What?
Were you for the overlay?
No, I'm with Step Up Bisbee Naco.
Oh, okay.
I don't think I'm on the agenda though.
Okay, please move up to podium and share with us.
Make sure you state your name.
Hello, yeah, Bill Bonnaker with Step Up Bisbee Naco. And interested in, we're partners with the city of Bisbee in what's called the Workforce Housing Program. Where we build affordable housing for people that work in the city of Bisbee. That's our focus. And how many, are we in our seventh project?
Not eighth.
We're on our eighth project at the moment. All sold to people who work in Bisbee. And our problem currently is that the cost of construction is so high that we used to break even and now we're running a negative on our projects. So it's getting tough to keep above water. And our feeling is that if we could build multiple units on one lot, like say do a cluster community or a cottage community with smaller homes than what we're doing, that we could be more affordable but much more cost effective. It'll allow us to keep on going and maybe we would actually be able to build a smaller house, site-built house, not a tiny one. But we're thinking about maybe 600 square feet. And we could possibly sell that for around $90,000. Because we don't have to make a profit, but we'd like to be able to break even on what we do. And so that's why we're interested in rezoning to allow more units on a single-family lot. That's about it. Thank you.
It's good to have that information, so thank you. Okay, just call for the public, which if anyone who wishes to speak other than the items are on our agenda. Are tiny homes on the agenda?
No.
Please give us your name.
Hi, my name is Richard Sanders. I live in 502 Powell Street. Tiny homes are an up and coming thing across America. I've been in the manufactured home business, sales setup. I've owned mobile home parks. I've owned RV parks. I've had a lot of different businesses. And tiny homes are the up and coming thing. They're very affordable, they're very nice. And I think you have the opportunity here in Bisbee to put something in your zoning codes that you can accept tiny homes. A lot of the lots in old Bisbee are small. Tiny homes would be the perfect fit for those. You also have the opportunity to have a tiny home community here in Bisbee. They're very affordable. They can be great for older people like myself that no longer wants to do the hard work of taking care of a house. And they're just something that I think the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to take a look at putting in some zoning codes that Bisbee can live with and they can expand with. Tiny homes are an up and coming industry. There's the possibility of having construction jobs here. They're very affordable homes. And I would encourage Planning and Zoning to look at tiny home zoning codes. I tried to see if there was any in the current zoning codes of Bisbee and there are not. But I think that it's time for Bisbee to step up and look at the up and coming thing and what's coming about across America.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a speech at this time?
I will.
Good.
My name is Kathleen Buchanan and I live at 1435 South Peaceful Place Lane in Bisbee. And I'm working on 501 C3 nonprofit status. But I'm also looking to develop a tiny home project over here at Collins and Naco Highway. And I'm concerned about Bisbee in general. My husband worked in the mine back in the late 50s. And he started the car dealership since Sierra Vista and then he sold those and moved to Prescott. And he was not a college graduate by any means. He didn't have the opportunity to go to school. But he's had a mindset to create something and he created rather large things. And I think in Bisbee what we really lack are jobs for people. And not educated people, but people that need to support their family. I mean, people that want to buy a home, they don't want to rent forever. They don't want to have to live off the community. They want to earn their own money. And I think the only way we can achieve that is to be able to house them. I mean, we have so many people working at Border Patrol, more than we have houses and even in the entire community that drive to and from the job, you know. So I think it's something that just needs to be addressed and it needs to be affordable for the income. And we definitely need to have families in this community. We lose so much not having children living here. And even for the senior people to be able to watch children and the good feeling that children bring to people. And we need to have jobs for people that they're not dependent on someone else owning the building and then they put their, you know, consignment things in the shop or something. And I would like to develop a portion of my property along Naco Highway, about 2.2 acres into a complex, light MSA complex in Tucson where we have conics, container type situation where people can own their own little retail business restaurant, you know, whatever. And we create a park-like setting around that, maybe a community garden. We have a nursery, hardscaping. We do educational things for people to learn things, maybe a small kind of sports theme area where we teach children.
You have 30 seconds left.
So anyway, I'm just thinking, you know, rather than having a lot of old houses that we're trying to rehab, we could start with a brand-new tiny home and be thousands of dollars ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I couldn't hear her.
Not very well.
Anyone else with a speech at this point? Okay, we'll move on then to Agenda Item 1, which is a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the zoning code, possible recommendation of mayor and council, consideration of proposed amendment to the Bisbee zoning code, Article 5, specific planned zoning, by adding additional overlay zone, Section 5.4 infill residential overlay zone and a Section 5.5 mixed-use infill overlay zone MU. This will create a zoning overlay that expands, allows uses within the area as outlined by the City of Bisbee Comprehensive Plan. We'll start off with staff report and I ask Emmanuel to, this is something I have not had past experience with and so to give us kind of a tutorial about what we're talking about here, at least for my benefit. So give us the basics.
All right. All right, so I'll tell you a bit about the overlay, more kind of the basics of what it is for, since this is a public hearing and everybody may be new to this concept as well. So what we do, so my goal is to create a section of Bisbee, or our goal I should say, but just with the staff report, to create a section of Bisbee that is going to encourage and facilitate the building of affordable housing, but also create the zoning code that takes into consideration the context of the neighborhood, current needs that we have right now, creates a sense of place. And this overlay is going to exist within areas that have utilities nearby where there could be potentially utilities such as sewer and water lines, transit lines, major roads. So to explain a zoning overlay, I'll start with something that everybody already knows, which is the current overlay that we have, which is the historic district in old Bisbee. That overlay, it places restrictions on old Bisbee, you know, you can only build according to a certain set of standards, you know, that's the designer review board, that's what the state historic preservation office, you know, outlines. So this, essentially, the zoning that exists is still there. It's just that they have another set of rules over top of those existing zoning areas. So for example, it's zoned R1 in most of old Bisbee, so you can only build single-family homes. So what I want to say, the difference between this overlay is that it's an expansive overlay. So the zoning that exists in these areas that I'm proposing an overlay in would still exist. And so you'd still have those rules that have been outlined by the zoning code, but it expands allowable uses and it modifies the existing zoning code. So anybody who, you know, wanted to have, say, like a lot with one house with 6,000 square foot, which is the minimal lot size in these current areas like in San Jose, they still could completely have those rules. But we're going to designate these areas with the overlay and it, hold on a second here. This overlay, essentially what it would do was it would allow you to have smaller lot sizes so that, say, if you owned a lot and you were just an individual and you had a house, you could split your lot into two smaller lots and you could, you know, or you could build another house, say, for like a family member, like, you know, think about mother-in-law in this. Or you could build another house and you could sell it. And essentially, it would create a lot, and I'm thinking about lot sizes roughly, maybe a bit smaller than the lot sizes that already exist in Saginaw or old Bisbee. So it wouldn't be necessarily an intensity, like a large, like an intensity of, you know, increase in intensity uses. Also, I think that that would allow more affordable housing in the sense that it would, it would really help individuals, say, like Step Up Bisbee Naco, they can buy a lot that's like 6,000 square foot. And according to the current zoning code, they can only build one house. But they could split that lot and they could build two workforce houses on those lots. Also, the expansion that I want to do in that zoning overlay is to allow people to, to bring, you know, to have a manufactured home, that the costs to put like a good quality manufactured home that, you know, is approved and underwritten by HUD standards, the cost is so much lower than actually building a site-built house. So that would really open up homeownership for a lot of people considering the lot sizes, you know. So, and also, but the thing is with the overlay is that you can really regulate it aesthetically, you know. You can have certain standards on, you know, the expansion of uses. Also, I want to say, you know, if you have a 6,000 square foot lot, you could build duplex or triplex or fourplex, something that would essentially create more housing. But also, it wouldn't be like, I mean, for one thing, if somebody wanted to build a development of some sort, they would still have to go through a site plan review. The building inspector would have to sign it off on it. If they wanted to do some subdivision or a large project, they'd have to follow the subdivision code. It's very regulated. There's no, there's no, it's not like, haha, okay, we're letting everybody do whatever they want, free for all. This is very regulated. You know, I'm working with Alyssa, I'm working with the city manager, I'm working with the mayor. We've all been talking about, I've been talking with other planners in other cities who've been looking at what they've, you know, the methods that they use. And everything that I'm suggesting, that I'm suggesting has been outlined in the general plan and is, and I'd say it's pretty safe. So with the overlay zone, I've pinpointed some crucial growth areas. Really emphasizing residential infill, gentle density as they call it. You know, we're not looking for like 10-story buildings and 501s and big things like that. We're looking for small, like infill projects, you know, cottage court, a couple of small houses. What I would say is the goal is to really have a more efficient use of land to really lower the startup cost for owning a home. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you a couple of things. I, the last couple of meetings, I gave you some ideas, some changes. And I took your advice, all right, well, this is only a little, I already covered that. So I took your advice. So what I want to do is in the zoning code, there is the historic preservation overlay zones. You can see right there, and these are the two new overlay zones that I'm suggesting. So before, I created a use matrix, right? So the black Xs were ones that are already existing that are allowed uses. The red Xs were, and then red text was my suggested expansion of uses. Well, you always feel a little scared by that and I totally understand. So I cut it down significantly. I changed it to yes. So essentially what I'm doing is I'm, in these overlay zones, you know, you have the one-family dwelling, which is allowed in residential areas, and then RM, manufactured homes, and commercial, one of commercial 2. C3, you can't have residential. But I'm saying that we can allow two-family dwellings, apartment houses, which, I mean, again, this is going to be very contingent upon site plans in this, you know, context of the area. Manufactured homes, I'm saying expanding those uses across all of them. Because we have to get creative right now, we're in this crisis right now. I think about people who have professional jobs and they're making $50,000 a year, which sounded like a lot of money a couple of years ago. And now we're dealing with home prices where you can afford a home, you only afford half of the price of a current home in Bisbee right now. The prices are out of control. And it's really disheartening for somebody who's trying, who works full-time and is trying to make a living and to see the potential homeownership kind of pulled out of their hands in their lifetime they were working towards this goal. I know I was, anyway. That's just my personal side. So triplex, fourplex, I think that is possible. And I think that with a lot of these kinds of houses, especially manufactured homes, you can use USDA rule development loans to get those, you know. It makes it within the realm of possibility to own a home. And there's a lot of great products out there in terms of manufactured homes that are very, they're very nice looking and they're underwritten by, you know, the HUD. And I think that, you know, that lends, like, if the government will lend money for that home, you know that that's going to be at least a decent, solid home. Better than people living in camper trailers or something because they can't afford to buy a home or if their rent is just out of control, right? Which is what's happening. The more homes you build, the more contemporary the market can allow for prices to stabilize, hopefully. Cottage clusters, two little homes, I see those around old Bisbee here and there. I see them in Warren. Townhouses, maybe you think of like maybe some row houses, something that would fit within the context. Now remember, everything is about the context of the place, right? What I'm suggesting is that we reduce the overlay lot sizes, I'm sorry, the lot sizes in the overlay. We, 6,000 square foot is the general minimum lot size. I was suggesting 2,100 because that's what the minimal lot size for commercial 2 areas are. But I'm saying something closer to 25 to 2,700. Saginaw, you know, it's like 3 something. The reason I'm saying below 3,000 is because I think that if anybody wants to do a lot split in areas where there's a lot of subdivisions with 6,000 square foot lots, they can do a split, right? And it won't, they won't be able to like have one and then have another lot that's not going to be, you know, you can't build a home on. So I'm saying that we could do a lot coverage and this is always negotiable to depend. But 70% is what's allowed in the RM zone, which is manufactured home. And I think that's a pretty good amount of lot coverage in terms of if you want to build townhouses, you know, it allows for you to do a small yard, parking space, things like that. Now we'll talk about the overlay zones, essentially where they would exist. So this is the area right here. This is Don Louis up there. This C3 or it's dark red, that's Safeway. I'm saying that, you know, I'm trying to really keep it very small. This is a very limited area of space, of town that would actually, this overlay would cover. It would, just this area would cover, it would be like a mixed-use infill overlay, which I'm thinking would be along the lines of allowing more residential in these areas, these commercial areas. Also, I think about south Bisbee, this is here, South Naco Highway. Right there, Sierra Cobra, 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 anyway. So I was thinking, right there, I'm going to say that the overlay, I would allow for mixed-use commercial along Naco Highway. And then the green would be residential infill. So each lot could have a bit more of an intense use besides one house per 6,000 square feet. And this area, a lot of this area has a lot of empty lots that could be filled in. There's water lines, sewer lines in some areas. This here, Sierra Cobra, again, it's an area that we're trying to find the city owns and is trying to essentially find a developer who will build affordable housing in that area. And people are not finding feasible, I don't think, to buy a piece of land and build single-family homes where it's one house per 6,000 square feet. They're just kind of, to make it pencil out, I think people need a more intense level of uses. And again, not intense, like, we're not looking at high rises. We're maintaining the 30-foot height in the buildings. We're looking at duplexes, we're looking at little courts, we're looking at, you know, manufactured homes, tiny homes, small spaces. Also, I was saying, and also I want to say that the area here, especially like this mixed use, we're looking at like a block in from the highway. Same with this area here, 92 down, got commercial areas all along 92, residential areas here. I'm saying that we could do a bit of an overlay residential infill, commercial infill along 92, about a block in on each, well, just to the north actually. The south side is pretty filled, sorry. We're keeping it really constrained within like a couple hundred feet from the main highway. The width is not very wide. So, and then looking at, this is Bakerville. So I was aware, you know, trying to be aware of the flood zone, there's a flood zone through there. But this area is already commercial 3. And R3, that's where Hillcrest is, the old hospital building. So again, we're allowing some residential in some of these areas where residential, or maybe a more intense use, so we can maybe come up with a plan for the area where we can actually have housing and commercial in a perfect harmony, I guess you could say. So Saginaw, I'm saying, you know, there's already, a lot of it is manufactured home, which has an expansion of uses, a lot of different uses. But I'm saying just the rest of it, just allow more, a more intensive, you know, and maybe we could have just the duplexes in this area. So that is really what I'm talking about, just like the expanded uses. We could essentially help address the affordable housing issue and help individuals who live here maybe have small skills and all that. Like people who own a house can make a second house on their property and sell it or rent it out. Just allowing expansion of uses, yes?
Hi, everybody, I'm Alyssa, I'm one of the city planners. I've worked with Emmanuel on this and I want to give you an overview of what we're doing actually from a little bit different perspective. When, we all know statewide, all around, there's this shortage of housing. The overlay zone is just another mechanism that would reform zoning to allow for smaller lots, more inexpensive builds, exactly like what Step Up was doing. And so we want to use this as a toolbox in our kit to bring more affordable housing here. Along with taking a look at the zoning, as you know, I came to you a few months ago that we weren't able to place a tiny home or a manufactured home or any of those other things. So the overlay zones don't need to be cumbersome. The use that we want to use for them is to be able to build or construct more affordable homes. And yes, the lot sizes will be smaller. But I don't want anybody to get too hung up in the difficulty of, well, will the density be too thick? Will it bring my house values up or down? Everything we looked at, we don't believe that that would happen and that it would still be very highly regulated. And a lot of this is in preparation, as you've said, for the tenure, for the comprehensive plan to allow for different types of affordable housing to be put in our community. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mission members, do you have questions for staff?
Thank you. Could I have a definition of cluster court?
I'm going to say it could be a couple of houses or duplexes on one lot.
So it's not like those California clusters you see where there's a stairs going up to a courtyard and then there's like eight units around it?
Yeah, something like that.
So eight units would be okay in this?
Uh, it just depends.
No, we haven't established that.
Okay, that's what I, because I, when I hear cottage court or cluster court.
And you know, to tell you the, do you mind?
Go ahead, please.
To tell you the truth, exactly what Step Up is talking about with three smaller units on the large-sized lot, that's more what we're talking about, cottage cluster. You know, and I'll tell you where we arrived at this. When we were looking through old, old pictures of Bisbee going right down Tombstone Canyon, there were at least one or two of these cottage clusters. So the reason, the term and the reason is to kind of bring back the old spirit, you know, of what we used to have here, yet it still provides, whether it's seniors or single parents or whatever, a way to have a smaller home, a close neighbor, you know, a tight-knit community. And it's the overlay zone that is part of getting that established.
So on Bisbee Road, there's three, I think there's three older trailers that were made into really interesting-looking.
Oh, sure, sure.
And, but that's probably RM?
It is an RM zone, actually.
Is it? Okay, so that's a whole different.
I know, exactly, yeah, we had a.
But is that what you think the cluster would look, I mean, they're very, they're.
Well, for a reference, I think you're right, you know, that the cluster would have some charm, some similarity. It's not, I don't envision, let me preface it that way, of three different-looking heights and all kinds of, especially because you're going to have a single builder usually. And again, I want you to really understand that this is a tool in the toolbox for getting more housing here. And we're a little ahead of the curve in some ways and a little behind in other ways. And what Emmanuel's saying is, you know, there are other communities that already allow for these things. Our present zoning really does not.
Can you, either one of you give me or us a scenario of how this would work if somebody wanted to do this in the, let's say, the MU zone? You know, they decide they have a six, let's say they have a 6,000 square foot lot, an average lot. What would they do? Do they come before planning and zoning? Do they not need to since it's in the overlay?
So the, for the cluster court, simply?
Well, no, just, just, how would they develop, let's say they have 6,000 square feet. What, and I don't want to, you know, tie you up with all kinds of what-ifs, but what can they develop on that property, very simply? And then it sounds like three lots would be easy enough. Let's say it was 6,300 and they reached 2,100 lots. Do they, is that by, is that by road? Do they, is that by, is that by roth, if it's?
By, by right?
By, by right, if it's, um, in the MU zone?
So with that area, you could, um, we, you, uh, well, for one thing, we're, you know, we're talking about having, uh, lot sizes be probably twenty-five to twenty-seven hundred. So you could have a small unit, uh, or also with a cluster court, you, um, you would, you would have to, there's a, a, so with an overlay, the advantage of an overlay. Is that you can really be more prescriptive with your design standards with those expanded uses, right? So you, you couldn't, you couldn't just build whatever, you would, you would have to follow the standards that we've set for each, each element. So if you had a clustered court, you can say, well, you can have this amount and you can do this, but you can't have like a, a trailer or a manufactured home and then like a tiny home and then something else, right?
Well, and I was just going by the twenty-one hundred you had.
Yeah.
Sort of, I think that's probably just something you put on there.
Well, yeah, I, I changed it up, I could, because you, you seemed a little wary of the twenty-one hundred, so I moved it to twenty-five to twenty-seven.
Yeah, I'm looking to you on what's the right square footage, twenty-one hundred seems tight, but is it something that a property owner can do?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I mean, on their own.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I see. Let, let me help, let me help you out if you don't mind once again.
Yeah.
So just because there's an overlay zone, it gives the property owner the ability to do this, he's still gonna have to go through the same, you know, if he's gonna split a lot. We, you still, they still have to do the same things. The only thing that this will do is allow him to step through the process. Um, it's, it's not gonna automatically mean, oh, I've got six thousand square feet, I can build one, two, three homes. That is not, that is not what, what this will do. But it will give the homeowner the ability to take a look and go through the regular channels, just like anybody else would, to do up to, to two or perhaps three homes. I do think that, um, we're totally willing to look at the lot size on that.
Yeah.
Where you said the twenty-one hundred, I mean, and I can be very honest that we were kinda look at what was existing and trying to come up with, you know, a, a decent figure on that. So, um, I do think that that's something that we.
So it's still in the air?
Yeah, we can still talk about that. I actually do think it's, it's whether or not you approve the concept of an overlay zone, um, that's here tonight for the vote. Um, and, uh, uh, or recommendation, I should say. And again, I'm gonna repeat myself that we are looking at this, um, as just another mechanism in the toolbox. But that the regulatory piece of it will all stay in place.
So if, and I'm sorry, I'm kinda dominating this conversation, but if, uh, somebody wanted to divide, let's say a sixty-three hundred square foot lot into three, just for the sake of discussion.
Okay.
Twenty-three, twenty-one hundred.
Right.
Square foot. Is this something not unlike what happened with that tiny house over in Saginaw? Where the neighbors get together and say, no, we don't want, we don't want three houses where we had, where we had one previously or the ability to pull one. This is an empty lot, let's say.
Right, right.
And does they, do they carry sway on that?
Well, I believe part of the, the, um, lot dividing is, don't you have to notify the neighbors?
Yes.
Isn't that part of it?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, so, so they're, they're gonna, they're gonna know and be able to say their piece. Um, yeah, the Saginaw piece, um, what a dilemma, um, frankly. Half the neighborhood was for the tiny home, half the neighborhood was not. Um, he bought the entire lot, so, uh, we didn't split that lot, but.
So that's the tiny home, basically, but neighbors could come together and say, this is just too dense for our neighborhood.
They could, they could decide, even though there's an overlay zone in place in that area. That their say is, we don't want this, this lot split. That's basically what you're doing, is splitting the lot smaller than we have before in the overlay zone. So yes, they, they could say it, but we have the mechanism in place.
Okay. Okay, so typically, Melissa, in Tucson, the very first stop is planning and zoning.
Right.
And the first thing they ask is, is this permissible use?
Mm-hmm.
So in that example, since it's an overlay zone, it's now considered a permissible use. Since it's permissible use, the neighbors cannot object to it because it's in a, it's a permissible use. If it was not a permissible use, in Tucson, you go to what's called a DDO or Design Development Option.
Right.
That only comes into play if you're asking for something that is outside of what the current zoning is. So I think we need to be clear that when you allow an overlay zone, I think we need to be clear that an overlay zone then kicks into gear. That you can't object to something that's permitted in an overlay zone. Because the zoning is now saying that you can split this lot into three parcels of twenty-one hundred square feet. What now is your objection? Now, your objection could be, I wanna build a two-story home or a three-story home on a twenty-one hundred square foot lot. Then you have to go to the next page of the code and say, okay, you're allowed to put a house here, but that house now has restrictions. So your objection can't be that I split the lot and put a house there, your objection then has to be what the underlying development is. And I think we need to be clear on that because people get lost in this, well, I have a twenty-one hundred square foot lot and now I can do whatever I want. And the neighbors can't really, the neighbors can only object to what is being built, they can't object to the zoning. Because now it becomes a permissible use under the overlay. And I think we should get clarification on that.
Yeah, I, I, I want to remind everybody that these overlays are a pretty narrow scope of Bisbee, right? We're talking along ninety-two and Naco Highway mainly, uh, a thin sliver of Bakerville and, and Saginaw. So, um, also, I wanna also remind people that, um, we could do a matrix, right? If you have a six thousand square foot lot, then you could have, you know, a cluster, but if you have, oh, I'm not gonna, I'm not asking for twenty-one hundred square feet, I'm asking for twenty-five to twenty-seven. But you can, um, you can, uh, matrix it, I could maybe make it matrix and say you can build or do this on this size lot and then, but this size lot you can't, right? Because it's gonna be an overlay, right? So you're gonna be having the allowed uses that, that were allowed there before there was an overlay and the overlay will expand the uses, but we can regulate those. I mean, we can seriously regulate them.
But I'm just responding to the comment that the objection is, no, you can't do that.
Yeah.
And that objection is really not about objection because the purpose of the overlay zone is to say, yeah, you can take a sixty-two hundred square foot lot or sixty-three hundred. And you can divide up into three parcels.
And that's correct, you're correct.
So that, that, that's the only thing I wanna make clear.
And you're correct.
Because the public needs to understand that.
Yeah, right.
That can't be the objection. You, if you wanna split it and you wanna create a twenty-one hundred square foot lot, you can do that.
Yes.
You can't object to that because the overlay allows you to make, make a small lot. Now, whether or not a tiny home can meet all the underlying guidelines to fit on a small lot, then lends itself to another discussion.
Right.
And I just wanna make sure that from a code compliant, everyone understands that. Cuz there's no harm in overlay.
Yeah.
The harm in the overlay is that when people take that idea and they're like, great, I can go build all these little houses all over the place and I can take these lots and split them up. And people think they can object to it.
That's what's gonna happen.
And, and, and the objection is, I just, well, again, I wanna reiterate, the objection is not, no, you can't do it and the object, because the zoning allows it. So you have to redefine what your objection is.
I agree.
And a lot of people, if you have a one acre lot and you don't want neighbors and all of a sudden somebody has another lot next to you. And they wanna take advantage of the overlay, they're gonna have to come up with a different argument other than, oh, no, you can't do that because, cuz now zoning, it's, it's one of many permitted uses.
Okay, and I agree with you.
Yeah.
Except the way that we will end up choosing the overlay zones is where they would be compatible with a lower.
Understood, but I just wanna respond.
But I understand exactly what you're saying.
For, for clarification, because the code has many, many layers of other contingencies that get involved.
Yeah.
The other thing I wanna ask you that, that comes up quite often.
Sure.
There's the discussion between, I hear the term affordable and I hear workforce.
Okay.
Two different animals.
Absolutely.
And I think since we have a decent sized audience here, I'd be curious to, for somebody to give their definition of, what is the difference between affordable housing and workforce housing?
Gentlemen, do you mind if I talk about it? The ci, the city partners with Step Up Bisbee Naco at the current time. And we do, yeah, please, that, we do a program with them, um, where first of all, there's a donation of a house. This is one of our ways of getting rid of vacant tenant, not getting rid of, but reusing vacant and abandoned buildings and sometimes lots. An individual purchases the lot, this individual then donates this lot to the city of Bisbee. The city of Bisbee then works with Step Up Bisbee Naco and they rehab this house. Now, the purpose of this program is recruitment and retention of essential workers. So one of the things many communities like ours find is they can't keep the firefighters and the schoolteachers and, and, and the people that live and work here. So by joining forces and partnering with Step Up, then the concept of this program is, once the home is completed. It is then sold at twenty percent below market value at, to an essential worker. And they really don't need to income qualify, but they need to have a job in one of the essential services here in town. They are also responsible for getting their own funding, um, so we don't do that for them. Uh, the only thing the city does do is we step up to, um, assist in about five thousand dollars in closing costs if needed. The point of this for the individual or the firefighter or the hospital worker, whoever it is, is that through, uh, quite a few different. Cuz we keep everything as in the community as we can right here in Bisbee. So a lot of times the financing is through USDA, which is a zero down. So this family, I can, like, went on N Street, um, that needed a place to live, was getting kicked out of their apartment, went in it. A beautiful, brand new, built home at zero down because they qualified for the USDA loan. The city assisted in the down payment assistance, so they got their own financing. So they basically went into a brand new home, the cost was one hundred and forty thousand dollars with zero down and zero at closing cost. And so they'll be in town now forever with their sweet kid, um, working, so that, that's affordable.
So curious to. Could affordable, could affordable housing play into an overlay zone?
I believe it could.
So if you had an overlay zone, so what makes it affordable is that there's assistance, is the bottom line. You're building at twenty percent below cost, you're getting people to sponsor, you, you're getting discounts, more or less, so.
That's workforce.
That's workforce.
Workforce, yes.
So the overlay zone, the, the theory is that by having the overlay zone, there could be an opportunity to put more of these quote unquote affordable housing.
There could, it both, it could go actually, I, I understand your question, it could actually go both ways. It gives Step Up the ability to be more cost effective in their, um, workforce housing because they're doing two, two, or, let, let's say two at the same time.
Sure.
Correct? Uh, on the affordable aspect of it, um, oh my gosh, let me say this. Any developer worth his salt is gonna take a look at, at the census and the numbers in this community. And in these areas where we are suggesting overlay zones, they are not gonna bear out a three or four or five hundred thousand dollar house, there's not a market there for it. Therefore, as long as they, that they are building something which is in the financial range, which is like one-seventy, one-eighty, it's.
Yeah, affordable housing, thirty, uh, not more than thirty percent of the area median income.
Yeah, right, right, which is, which has gone up, but still, um, that's what I categorize, affordable housing.
So what is that dollar value, what does that equate, I'm just curious, cuz I'm a developer and a builder, for in Bisbee, what does that equate to?
That's.
About a hundred and seventy grand?
Less than that, very, very median income in Bisbee, just like.
Well, fam, family force forty thousand and change.
And change, and so.
That's the average.
And so you wanna get thirty percent of that, you wanna pay a month on housing, right, thirty percent of that, so.
Didn't you say, uh, mention that the average person in Bisbee can only afford ninety thousand dollar house?
That's roughly about their, their, their price point, I, I, in one of the stat reports I gave you all, I, I broke it all down. I gave you the area median income, the home prices, and I compared them. Um, that was a couple of stat reports ago, and so I can't pull it off the top of my head right now. But that's, that's the, um, that's what we're looking at, is people can afford, fifty percent of the city of Bisbee, the people that live here can afford about ninety thousand, is like their.
If they were a homeowner?
If, yeah, if they were to buy a home, yes, if they were to try to buy a home, but they can't get a home, home for ninety thousand dollars here unless they wanna buy a shack that doesn't have a toilet.
Good question, Mike, big question.
No, I'm curious, so for, for your tiny homes, not, there won't be tiny homes, there'll be smaller homes, smaller homes, what is your, what is your average square footage?
Well, right now, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, six hundred square feet.
Okay.
Uh, and that's a nice, uh, one bedroom house, one bedroom, one bath, complete house, site built, uh.
So that's a hundred and fifty bucks a square foot?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then.
Uh, just, I'm just going the bad, you know, I'm going with it.
We could raise that ninety thousand dollar goal, but if we have to go larger than that, then of course the cost is gonna escalate that much more.
Well, actually, your price goes down cuz of diminishing returns. The larger the square footage, the price per square foot goes down to build.
But see, if we could do, when, when we, we purchase land, if we could do three on one lot instead of one, as a builder, it's, which.
We all economies of scale, if you could put three homes, you can take a lot that's sixty-three, I'm just trying to understand and make sure everyone's clear.
Yeah, because, yeah, it cuts down on your infrastructure costs too, which we always have and.
Are the impact fees gonna be reduced accordingly with the city?
You know, I, I honestly can't answer that.
I mean, that would be a question that, that should be brought to mayor and council, is that if we're gonna do this, then there's always impact fees for builders.
Yeah.
And there's sewer connection fees, so you've got your construction costs at a hundred and fifty bucks, but rarely does that include your site costs.
And I understand that and I think what we're looking is, is from you guys, is a recommendation to take this the next step.
Sure, and I'm going way down.
But I, but I appreciate it, I appreciate it. Let me just say this real quickly, that we did do a seven hundred and forty square foot house. Um, and we sold it for a hundred and five thousand dollars, um, and it was a beautiful, great deal.
And that's, what was that, a one bedroom?
That was what I'm saying, a bedroom.
A two bedroom, so, I mean, for a family, I mean, we're talking about families, that's why I said the difference between affordable housing and workforce. Cuz workforce is typically just a single individual that could live in a three hundred, four hundred, for whatever, but if we wanna retain families. You gotta have a minimum of probably seven hundred and fifty square feet, a husband and wife and a newborn or whatever, you gotta have at least a one bedroom.
Yeah.
So your costs are gonna go up at a hundred and fifty bucks a square foot, you're gonna now, you're gonna exceed that ninety thousand dollar.
Yeah.
Okay, I just.
No, they're.
I wanna make sure everyone's clear on this because.
No, I, I totally agree.
You run, you run in situations where you're allowing this to happen and all of a sudden, what the idea was is workforce housing turns into tenements.
No.
Oh, no, no.
Just wanna make sure that that.
This is, this is, this is an opportunity that the city partners with and we, we are very comfortable with what Step Up is doing. Let me just add one thing to the mix of what you're saying there too, is, as you know, we have the second port of entry coming in.
Yeah.
And there's gonna be approximately eight hundred new, um, employees. Now, they're going to come, cuz I've attended some of the meetings, they're gonna come in three different clusters, basically. And so that does speak a bit to the tiny home or the, the smaller home issue here is because this is gonna be, you know, midway between Bisbee and Douglas. First, what's gonna come in are the contractors and the builders. Uh, next are gonna come in the, the temporary, the trainers and the people that are gonna work there on a temp basis. And then thirdly, will come in the permanents. And it's when the permanent employees come in that we're gonna see more of the families and the, you know, this is their, now their new assignment. So you, you, we, we are also trying to factor that, the construction of the new jail and a few other things in the mix. And I'll add one last thing and then I'll be very quiet, is that our. And I'll add one last thing, and then I'll be very quiet, is that our very good hospital utilizes so many traveling nurses, specialists and everything, they have come to me and we work all the time together, trying to figure out, because they can't even rent a house for a doctor that comes in. And we want to provide them with the ability to house these these traveling specialists.
So, the only thing I'd add to that is we just wanna be cognizant of that, that what starts out with the best of intentions.
Agreed.
Okay, is that we're gonna provide an affordable house, okay? Traveling nurses a good example, or anyone that's a transient person. You start out with great intentions, the next thing you know, somebody buys a six thousand square foot lot and chops it up into three small houses with the intention of affordable housing. The affordable housing concept goes away because somebody now buys the house, and the next thing you know, they're not renting, they're not renting it out anyway, they're doing an Airbnb, or they're doing something, but that opens up a whole nother conversation.
And that is something we can regulate.
Yes, and that's, that's critical, because if these are affordable housing based on overlay, there should be some conditions. Because I know a lot of people, yeah, I just, for the board's benefit, you gotta see this all the way through, because you go in this with the best intentions of developing for a need. That need is met, and then those people move on, which is the idea, but then who comes and replaces them, and then it's no longer, longer a house.
We have strict restrictions.
So, that would be something that needs to be taken into consideration for probably mayor and council to be conscious of this.
Agreed.
That typically, when you buy an affordable house, it comes with certain rules and regulations as far as paybacks and lengths of stay.
Which our program does.
And so, if those are all in there, then those boxes just get checked.
And those.
It's, it's a five-year restriction, right?
Yes, it is.
You cannot sell this house.
You can't flip it, you can't Airbnb it.
That's our restrictions.
But, that's for your workforce housing.
Correct.
Your affordable housing, it's up to the to the person's.
No, no, it's still gonna be the same restriction.
Well, can you do a favor?
If a developer comes in, industry homes in there, he has the ability, and and someone buys it, his point is is well-taken. The workforce housing is a very separate program that the city has partnered in.
And how do you hold the restrictions on the developer that takes a six thousand square foot, six thousand three hundred square foot lot, breaks it into three lots, and then builds three houses? There's no restrictions on that, that's by code?
Well, here's, I'm telling you again, that with an overlay, you can put restrictions into the overlay.
Okay, that's great.
Right, but listen, but I want you all to do me a favor, though, please. I want you, yeah, because you're expanding uses, but with expanded uses and over an existing zone, you can place restrictions that you can't normally place.
Because it's the overlay.
Because it's an overlay, right?
That sounds great.
But.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanna ask you all, if you all have concerns, you know, and I'll take this before a mayor and council, but I really, the things that you're talking about are very important, you know? You all have a lot of experience, you're a developer, you are a planner and architect, you've done, a lot of you have just done a lot of work, and you have so much more knowledge of the city of Bisbee, you know? And I really would love it if you guys would take your concerns and send them to me, and I can build that into into the plan moving forward, right? So, we can take it, we can touch it, we can put it into consideration, so that I will be aware, because I know that you all are very wary of, again, the road to hell is paved with good intentions, you know, so, I'm gonna say, so.
You know, I've seen it too, son.
I have too, and you know, and and my goal is not to create a free-for-all, not to give developers just like a free pass to just do whatever they want. This is really about individuals, you know, being able to, and if a developer buys a lot at six thousand square feet and then they split it into two, I mean, I mean, I hope that developers wouldn't come in and have a feeding frenzy on this town. I, I, you know, but I, but I, again, I'm thinking that I made the lot, minimal lot size is a bit bigger. So, we're looking at the same size of like Saginaw, roughly, I mean, a couple hundred feet less, but, you know what I'm saying? Developers are not going to Saginaw and be like, oh, boy, oh, boy, three thousand square feet, I'm gonna get, you know what I mean? So, it's like, you, you've really, you know, because there's a lot for sale in RM zone in Saginaw, you can do a lot in RM. RM, the allowed uses are just, I mean, pretty much almost like what I'm suggesting here. And developers aren't coming in and they're not doing that with RM sort of properties.
Can I ask for clarification?
Uh-huh.
And I think that you think we're poking at you, and we're not, you're doing a great job bringing this to us. You and I have discussed this at times. I think an overlay is a great thing to have. What I saw here was twenty-one hundred square feet, you said maybe twenty-five, twenty-seven, and I can't see, I want it to go to the city council, but I can't see voting for something that we don't have hard numbers on.
I, I think too, that I think that, if you don't mind.
Of course.
This is the concept of the overlay.
Exactly.
This isn't the restrictions, the the be and end all of this is what we're gonna allow, this is what we're not gonna allow. This is, this is your recommendation to council for the concept. This is still, once the concept is passed, there will still be more discussions and more public hearings to set those restrictions, to set those guidelines or standards for those homes. So, this is the first step in that direction.
Because I felt like what we were looking at was something going to city council.
Just for a public hearing.
Right.
This is just the public hearing, this is just.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, it's the concept of, this is what.
A direction we'd like to go in.
Melissa, yes, the direction that we feel is feasible and that we could work off of it. So, this, this isn't the restrictions or any of that, this is just the concept of the overlay to get the process started.
So, is it basically, as it says here, we are creating the residential overlay zone that I are, and we're creating the mixed-use infill.
Correct, those are the concepts that that we.
Those are the two things we are looking at recommending.
Correct.
Okay.
And this is the start of it, these are saying, this is what we're looking at. You recommend it to council, and then the public hearing goes to council, but then the hard work starts. Melissa and Emmanuel will have to now go and say, in Bakersville, this is what we're gonna allow. In Saginaw, this is what we're gonna allow, and there will be criteria, just like there is in the historic district. There will be criteria that those in the overlay will have to follow.
And we may, the overlay may change a bit, frankly, that's, that's not out of the realm, you know? And I guess I, the other thing I'd only encourage you all to think about is that we are bumping up against some timelines for the ten-year comprehensive plan, which is why we are bringing this to you now, because there's a lot more work to do.
Correct.
There's a lot of work.
A comment on the concept here for Bakersville, maybe there's potential to expand that green a little bit more into Bakersville based upon the current infill availability and lot size.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I wanted to keep it small, only because I just don't wanna go free-for-all and do a lot of stuff, but I, I support that, so, thanks.
And, and we, we don't have your condensed copy of the zoning and what's allowed in each, the R one, R two, R three.
Right, no, he just did that on here, yeah.
That will come to us again later.
Right, though, this is the, this is just laying the the foundation sort of, and then we'll start building on those, those overlays.
Concept out there and getting feedback from the public.
Correct, getting the feedback, and then once we, once you recommend it or don't wanna recommend whatever, or you want certain changes to see, like Alyssa, Alicia wanted maybe a bigger space in Bakersville, we take that to mayor and council, we hold another public hearing, and let them know, this is the concept. And then the next step will be setting the, what will be allowed, the restrictions, the standards and all of that. And I'm assuming you'll probably take it in sections, correct?
I believe that's the only way to go.
Well, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure.
Yes.
It's complicated, and we wanna do right by our community. And on the other hand, we wanna give people the opportunity to live where they work, it's pretty much that simple.
Pretty much it.
Yeah, so, once those concepts are laid, and then we start the next thing, so, in Bakersville, in that area, that's when we, when we, if, when we do the restrictions, that's when that area will be notified. We'll do the three hundred-foot notification of that area and say, this is what's gonna be coming before planning and zoning. And it still has to go through mayor and council also, so it's not just you recommend it and it's done. Just so everybody knows, it's you recommend it, then the council takes it under advisement, and they either tweak it, leave it, or say no, go back and work it again.
So, I'd like to make a motion if I could.
Oh, wait, you gotta do the public hearing first.
Oh, that's right. I'd really like to make a motion.
Let me say I appreciate your comments and your thoughtfulness on this a lot. Because I can tell you, when I started with Emmanuel, I didn't get it. So, I understand where you guys are coming from.
Well, I really like what he's bringing to the, to the table, and I think it's important for the city.
It's certainly an immediate future step would be delineation of each zone or overlay district.
Correct.
That would be up to dispute, so, people are not gonna be fearful of something's gonna be imposed upon me. This would be a discussion of, in terms of delineation of each one of these overlay districts, and there'd be some discussion of that, as well as you're also then saying there'll be standards within each of those.
Well, like restrictions, like how it is in the zoning code, I'm sorry.
No, please.
I'm just talking, I'm sorry, like in the historic district where the overlay is, there are restrictions that are in the overlay. It will be laid out like that. So, it would say, whatever, I forgot what the title is, it would be the title, and then there would be criterias for that, or restrictions, or whatever was brought forward, whatever you think that would be, manufactured homes, square footage of the lot, it would specifically state those things in there. And those things would be then discussed with the neighbors around at another public hearing.
And that would vary from zone, overlay zone to overlay zone? Because here, you're talking about things that would be.
It could, it could.
We have to figure that one out.
Right, it could, for the simple fact, you know, in, where the more there's commercial use and there's residential, that area may be a little different than it would be in Bakersville.
That's right.
Or Saginaw, so, each overlay would have its own, I would think, set of criteria. And then, there would be, in that overlay zone, in that criteria, there could be restrictions for the certain ones.
For the zonings, yes, correct.
Yeah, but we're, but we're looking at a lot of, you know, just broad details, well, not broad details, but broad, you know, elements. Also, I wanna say, though, that if you wanted to build something that follows the standards of the current zoning code, you could do it without any restrictions, you could only, only restrictions of the current zoning code. So, if you wanted to have a site-built house with that, that, on a six thousand square foot lot, you could just do it, no, you know, wouldn't have to run through it. So, again, it's really just, you know, and I think a lot of people would wanna do that still, if that was their goal, you know? But, just allowing those expanded uses within limits and guidelines.
Okay, we have someone standing here, someone with a question, public meeting, hearing open, do receive public input.
I just wanted to say that I think we need to have a discussion, I would really like your input, and also the public's input, as to exactly what type of housing we need in the city, what what best meets the workforce needs in the city, whether, maybe it's not a one-bedroom, maybe we need to go bigger, but we also need to establish parameters as to what these houses are going to sell for, because if they get, you know, if they're too pricey, then they don't meet the need of affordable, and there are not, not that many people will be able to qualify to buy them. So, I, you know, I mean, we're welcome to, we really need input from the community as to what we need to build, you know, for the community that would serve, you know, purpose best for what we're doing. So, that's.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
We'll be working on our general plan, and that will be part of that discussion as well. Other individuals like to speak here, open, public hearing. Identify yourself by name.
My name's Mike Norman, I live at six oh two Bisbee Road in Bisbee. And I own property on the corner of Nakow Highway and Highway ninety-two on the southwest corner. And I just kinda learned about this hearing on Saturday, and I spoke with Emmanuel, got a little more information about it. And I, I got somewhat of the impression that my property would be included in this overlay zone, so I just wanted to have a better understanding of how that might impact my property in the zone. One of the concerns I have is my property and some of the other lots adjacent to mine are on septic. And accessing, or I'd like to connect to sewer my property, but there's no sewer lines easily accessible in that area. So, I guess I would, I'm advocating that city look into providing sewer infrastructure in that area, especially if you're looking at an overlay zone that reduces the lot size. If you go down to a smaller lot size, you won't be able to serve those properties with septic. So, sewer would be very important, and that was my main concern, is that as part of this planning effort, the city wants to improve in sewer lines in that area. Also, this information could be posted on the city's website, it's a little bit difficult to see on the screen here, so that people that own properties that may be impacted by this zoning change can be educated and have a better idea of how they might be impacted. The other question I have is, this refers to mixed-use infill overlay zone and infill residential overlay zone. From my experience, infill typically is for lots or properties that are undeveloped or in need of redevelopment, so I, I guess I'm wondering how that's defined? I mean, are, are you gonna have a situation where if you put the overlay in, you have a smaller lot size, someone could buy a house in that zone, tear it down, split the lot into two or three, and build three houses on it? So, again, the unintended consequences, something to take into consideration.
You have thirty seconds.
Okay, in closing, I just want to say I, I'm in favor of things that the city can do to make housing more affordable. And, but again, make sure the infrastructure's in place or there's plans for it to support that. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak during the public hearing?
I just had a question here.
Come up here, identify yourself.
Monica, Monica Patience, and I live in Bisbee. So, I'm wondering, where are, where are these eight thousand people coming from?
Eight, oh, it's eight hundred?
Yes.
Oh, it's workers for the border patrol station that they're building, so they'll be, and they won't come all at the same time.
Oh, okay.
So.
Other input during our public hearing?
That'd scare me too.
Any further comments? I'll close the public hearing. Commission discussion? I guess I have one more question, you talk about, you got two infill areas, and one is an infill residential. It talks a lot about neighborhood businesses, and I'm not quite, I didn't quite, I don't quite comprehend that.
Um, well, you know, I was thinking neighborhood businesses, something that would be very low intensity of use. We're talking corner market, something that somebody could walk to the store to the corner to get, pick up a couple of groceries. Small stores, we're not talking supermarkets, hair salon, maybe, something very, very low impact and that wouldn't take a lot of space, that would really, very cafe. Kind of a lot like how old Bisbee, there's some elements there, you know, like there's that Circle K in the neighborhood over there. I mean, Circle K's not the greatest example, but it's, it's, it's a store in the middle of a neighborhood that people can go and pick up some, you know, something relatively, so.
Well, I think historically, that was the case, we have lots of those in in Bisbee, but I don't know if it's practical today. And infill to me would be more housing, and that's why I was kinda confused, because you talk about commercial, rather than housing in that infill district.
That's a possible allowed use, I think that, it's possible that you could maybe put that through like, you know, review, a review process, process. But, I was just considering the idea of allowing some very low intense uses.
Well, that's my only concern, I don't know if that's practical in today's world.
I mean, at this. I mean, at this point, all the overlays are so close to existing commercial zones, I just don't, I could probably pull that out of this, because everything is so close to commercially-zoned areas already that are in the overlay, so.
Well, you use the word infill, and I thought of that as housing infill rather than commercial infill. So that kind of confused me in terms of that.
Yes, I see what you're saying.
That separate zone or overlay.
Yeah.
Other comments from... Again, we need to really make the point that this is the first step.
Yep.
And each of these things will be, we're not imposing this on the whole community.
Oh.
It will be, the next step will be delineating these overlay zones, and then also defining what will be possible within each one of those.
Yes.
This is a long process here, and there'll be public input, neighborhood input in terms of each one of those.
Yes.
Maybe I can make one more comment, and say, the live-work situation, is that what you sort of had in mind? So somebody's, like the old days of living behind your little convenience store, or, you know, maybe you have an alteration shop that does clothing alterations or something.
So I was thinking that as being something that you could do along, like, Naco Highway, or within a block of Naco Highway, because, or Highway 92, because there is a lot of commercial that's underutilized along those areas. And a lot of those zones don't allow residential, or they only allow one house, you know. So I'm thinking, you know, if you could do a couple of apartments above a commercial space in that general area along the highway there, then you could essentially expand, you know, housing, but also have a commercial district. I mean, again, I really want to see San Jose, I think it's very possible that, you know, I mean, this sounds silly, but I'm like, come visit downtown San Jose district, you know what I mean? Like, something that, I mean, then again, you know, you could do that in Saginaw, or not Saginaw, but in, in Bakersville too, the main drag there, you know, it's got, it's got the bones for being a commercial and residential district that, you know, is all a low-impact uses.
Well, for all of these districts that you've highlighted here, you, you have an opportunity to walk from your home to a store, or to the post office, and that is a quality-of-life issue that I think really needs to be encouraged. Old Bisbee is like that quite a bit. It would be great if San Jose was that way, Bakersville, Warren, and Saginaw.
And ADOT right now is pushing for, well, here in Cochise County, they're kind of pushing for safe streets for all brands, and they're really pushing for road design that really fosters connectivity. And then there's also the Bisbee area master mobility plan, which also creates designation, destinations, I'm sorry, and mixed-use paths between those destinations. So I'm trying to think of this holistically, not just like expand, you know, density, but it's like really thinking about traffic and way that people get around, and also reducing traffic, so that if you have more housing, you won't have, you know, a traffic jam on 92 at the stoplight. You know, people can easily get to where they want to go by bicycle or by the multi-use paths, you know, because things will be closer. So, anyway, the holistic perspective is what I'm looking for here.
I think that's great.
Other further comments?
You know, I just have one comment. I agree with Mike in that we have to be really, really careful. And the, the one thing that comes to my mind is, I heard a resident of Old Bisbee the other day say that someone from the city told them that we're going to put tiny houses all over the hillsides. Wherever there's an old, seriously, wherever there's an old foundation of a miner's cabin, we're going to put a tiny home.
Well, sorry if the city's holding that?
So...
Yeah, I don't buy that.
Not unless they want to have trouble, make trouble for themselves.
I just, you know, I...
Just to put you at ease, this gentleman, yeah, so the gentleman made a very good point. You know, they have septic.
Yep.
You go on to buy your house up into three lots, God bless you. You're not putting a septic tank on a lot that's 2,100 square feet. So there are, there are underlying things that I, I just, again, to your credit, that's why it's a public hearing, the public is quick to pounce on, oh my God, what's going on, without a lack of understanding. There's so many underlying elements that will still have to be met that, from a developer's perspective, make it cost prohibitive. So the overlay zone is designed to try to make things more enticing, but there's still a whole host of underlying restrictions that you're just not going to be able to go into an area and cannibalize it.
Right.
So just to put that fear, you know, you don't have to worry that your neighbor's going to buy the house, tear it down, and put three houses. He's got to meet traffic engineering, sewer, I mean, there's a gazillion different things that are just not going to make it cost-effective for him to want to do it. So the biggest thing in the U.S. right now is all of the zoning regulations, and the time that it takes, that time is money. I want you all to understand, it costs a tremendous amount of money to do development, and it takes years. And developers don't want to spend that money. That's why there's a shortage of housing, because there is available land out there, but to develop it has become cost prohibitive because of all the various processes that are involved. So this is just one step. There's a gazillion others that are going to have to be required. So I wouldn't worry.
Well, I don't worry about that, I just want to be able to connect to sewer.
But again, please do.
I was going to say also, not only are we dealing with the citizens of Bisbee, but we're also dealing with the state legislature, who is discussing these exact issues right now. And there's some dispute between legislators, and the legal cities and towns, and so forth. So this is, could very much regulate what we can do, if anything. Okay, ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Plan and Zoning Commission recommend the mayor and council a proposed amendment to the zoning code, Article 5, specific plan zoning by adding additional overlay zone sections 5.4 infill residential overlay and section 5.5 mixed-use infill overlay zone amendment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll do a rule call group, Mike Gavlin?
Approve.
Okay, David Cobb?
Approve.
Doug Dunn?
Aye.
Alicia Espirito?
Approve.
Approve, Sandy Huesman?
Yes.
And Doug Taylor?
Approve.
Okay, carry on. And pass it on to the city council.
Thank you.
Agenda item two, discussion and possible approval. Discussion of possible approval, the holy public hearing for an amendment to the zoning code, Article 6, General Provisions, Section 6.8, outdoor storage, by adding shipping containers as a prohibited permit, outdoor storage.
So, Havi, I'm going to speak first, and then I'll let you, whatever item I get to, you can get to.
Okay.
So at the last meeting, we were holding a public hearing, and I think there was some confusion on what we were talking about with the public. So we're not saying that you can't have a, you know, use one of these to live in, or whatever. What we're saying is, we don't want it to be used in a residential area for outdoor permanent storage. Not, and it can be used in commercial and manufacturing, which is already in, excuse me, which is in the D where we want to use it. So I think the confusion was, we're not regulating that you can't live in one, you can't turn it into whatever. This is just for outdoor storage. And if you look at the back, we pulled a couple of places that were away from Bisbee, but they're, what they had to say about outdoor storage. Sorry, I can't see, what happened across? So one of them, it was like, this was to limit the use of the storage containers to avoid unsightly conditions and degradations of communities and their characters. So we, we do have a lot of people who complain about there being a shipping container in someone's backyard, and they're using it for storage. Well, this is, what we're hoping is that this won't become everywhere in the residential, and so that it's just for outdoor storage, that we're asking it not to be allowed.
I'm here. I might just feel like these were, you know, made for shipping, for shipping yards, not residential uses. They shouldn't be allowed to be in, these commercial-type things shouldn't be allowed in residential areas.
I was not present at our last meeting, which was this was discussed. Did somebody like to give some summary on their interpretation of the hearing that was had a month ago?
I think a lot of, a lot of things came up during the discussion, and the, the use of the containers came up as homes, and we said that's not a part of what we're looking at.
Right.
We're just looking at outdoor storage. It's still okay for temporary storage during construction or work projects. I think we have a certain time limitation on that. I thought that we, I thought we understood it as it was written, but maybe I'm wrong.
No, I thought we did.
Well, I guess with the public, some of them really didn't, so we thought it'd be best if we just made it its own separate thing. Because I think some of the residents and some of the citizens were confused because we included it with trailers and campers and things like that. So that's why we decided to take it away from C and make it its own, so that it was clarified.
So my understanding from the last meeting, when we voted to not pass it to council, there was very valid points from the community that it is a fireproof option to store stuff in. And I think we heard the community pretty loud and clear that if you want to use a shipping container, it's economical and fireproof, and it should be allowed.
And that is the commission's decision. We're just bringing it to you because we've had several complaints about residents who do not want to see them. And there are a lot of cities and towns that do not allow them for storage in residential, but they do in others, in other zones, in commercial and manufacturers. And you can use them to store things when you're in construction. But it is the commission's right to say, yes, we move it forward to a public hearing, or no, we don't.
Well, I think that they do not have a residential look, if that's what people are concerned about on...
Well, it's the character of their community, they don't want it to be changed.
Yeah, it has a very industrial look, that seems okay with, with, you know, commercial properties. But I think that, you know, we, I didn't know that we had turned it down, but, and I think there, you know, we heard from like five people that were for it, I don't know how many of...
There were three, I think.
Three.
What do you do if you want to do a container home, you want to have container storage?
That's totally...
Well, that was allowed.
It's allowed.
Yeah, it's allowed. Because it was a building material rather than a structure.
Also, if this was passed, the existing ones would still be grandfathered, correctly, this was not...
I don't know that we have very many, but they would be grandfathered in.
They'll be grandfathered in, if you have to turn it.
And this is just a, we'd come back with, next meeting, with a public hearing for the public to have their say.
So let's do that, that's...
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Uh, see, item two, I move that, we, I move we hold a public hearing for an amendment to the zoning code, Article 6, General Provisions, Section 6.8, outdoor storage, by adding shipping containers as a prohibited permanent storage, outdoor storage. And can I reference, uh, item D, is that what it is?
Yes, item D.
And that we include item D in that? And so we'll have a public hearing to decide that.
Mainly, we're voting to have a public hearing, is this...
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose? Okay, carry on. Agenda item three, discussion of possible approval to hold a public hearing for amendment to the zoning code, Article 6, General Provisions, Section 6.15, regarding solar energy devices, by amending to allow for administrative approval for design review for solar applications.
Good evening again. So at the DRB, it was, they discussed having administrative approval given to the building official for solar applications that come before the board. Well, in the code, it doesn't really specify that it can be given administrative approval, but there are criteria that it has to meet not to hold a public hearing. So the change that I'm, we're requesting is that in 6.15, solar energy devices in section C, that we add, so in where it says, "Application for permits to install solar devices within the Bisbee Historic District, which are proposed to be installed in a manner that is consistent with these design principles stated below, which can be reasonably met under the particular circumstances, as determined by the building official, shall be subject to compliance with all applicable building and safety codes, and shall not require any additional form of public review." We want to add, and can be given administrative approval. So they will have to follow all 11 criteria in order for the design review board application to get an administrative approval. The other thing that we're adding is in item C3, we wanted to include public right-ofways, where it says locate the solar device in an area that minimizes its visibility from the streets. It's already, we just wanted to add that just so that they're aware, because some places, it's not the street, it's the right-ofway that's their home. And then item nine, we're going to add item nine, which is to ensure that the solar photovoltaic panels mounted on the face of the pitch roof, which can be seen from the public right-ofway if panels are mounted flush with the roof. So this will, is in an instance, like we had one over on Sims Road. When a sun report was done, the only place that the house would get sun would be in the front, which unfortunately for them, in this, it doesn't allow for. But we're saying that we will allow it as long as it is flush with the roof, and it has the, what are those things called that are removable?
Mounting brackets.
Thank you, mounting brackets, as long as those are removable. We don't require them to give us the sun report, but this would be a mechanism if they say the sun report was done, and this is where the best place to place it. So really what I'm asking is just to add those things to the zoning code so that we can administratively approve these certain solar applications that fit into this criteria.
Any question or comments from commission members?
Do we have many requests?
We probably do a good amount of solar. I'm going to say maybe 15 a year. And the board is always saying that, you know, some of these probably could have been administratively approved, but there was no mechanism in the code for that.
So we're asking here then to, a motion to...
Hold a public hearing.
...a hearing on this. Make a...
I'll make a motion that we hold a public hearing for amendment to the zoning code, Article 6, General Provisions, Section 6.15, solar energy devices, by amending to allow for administrative approval for design review board solar applications.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? Carry on. Okay, we're moving on, this has been an interesting meeting. Staff comments, any further?
Aye, thanks for recommending this go to mayor council. That's about it.
Okay, commission comments? Okay. Future agenda items, you got that taken care of?
I'd like to recommend, Havi, we put knockboxes on all commercial properties. That's where you guys benefit, that's so the fire department can easily access as a key to gain access in light of what's happened with the recent fires. We really need to take a hard, hard look. Our fire department did an unbelievable job despite what other people are saying. And we just had two more fires by the lumberyard. And God forbid, had it been a day in July with a big wind, you would have said bye-bye to Bisbee, guaranteed. So I know, Javi, you and I are working on, but I'd like to make the recommendation that we bring this up in mayor and council when we talk about fire city. Because for guys to be able to get access into these buildings quickly and easily, knockboxes are pretty much standard in every city. So just a fly eye.
Okay?
Thank you.
Other agenda items? Are we ready to adjourn?
Yes.
I will adjourn.
We are adjourned.